Good morning, everyone. It is Wednesday, April 26, 2017, 9 o'clock, and we're ready to start our Board of Commissioners meeting. I certainly want to welcome everybody here this morning, a lot of special people that we'll be recognizing in a moment. We start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so please join.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And in the interest of being perfect, we're here in the Senator Hearing Room, Courthouse Square, 555 Court Street, Northeastern Salem. So, first item always is public comment. No one has signed up. Did anyone wish to take advantage of this opportunity? All right, then let's get right into one of my favorite and most important presentations of the year. It's the annual report and awards ceremony on volunteers. And Lisa Miller, if you'd just go ahead and begin and tell us where you want us to be.
Thank you. I'm very excited to hear this is one of your favorite events. It's mine as well. We did promise you a party last year, so I think we are living up to our promise. But first this morning, good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Lisa Miller, Marion County Volunteer Services. I'm the Volunteer Services Coordinator. And this morning, I would like to first start off with a little summary of our annual report, and then we will get to some, recognizing some of our very important volunteers. So, a little introduction to our volunteer program. A lot of our volunteers, we have volunteers placed in almost all of our departments throughout the county, in a lot of different types of areas. We have some programs that are solely reliant on volunteers, and then we have some departments that might have one or two volunteers that are help assisting with their regular everyday duties. Our volunteers are coming in and helping out in ways, we have interns from schools that are there to get some experience, we have volunteers that are really passionate about something that, a program that we're providing, a service that we're providing in the community, and they just really want to get involved and help. Some of my favorite volunteers are the volunteers that just happened to be asked by somebody in the county. They needed a little help, and they brought them on board as a volunteer, and those individuals actually realized that volunteering was kind of fun, and they got something out of it and decided to come back the next year. So, this morning, we're going to go briefly through the report. I'm just going to highlight a couple of items. If we had time, I could share a lot of stories with you, but this morning it's just going to be a couple. So, in Marion County, last year, we had over 3,000 volunteers who contributed over 137,000 hours to our county. If we were to put a dollar amount to these number of hours that were given to our county, it would be valued at over $3 million. We know that our volunteers provide a lot of value to our county, to our services. They really help us succeed in fulfilling our missions in our departments, and so we're greatly appreciative of all of our volunteers. To highlight a couple of our programs that we have, we have volunteers that are out there providing direct service to our community members. One program in particular, our Victim Assistance Program, is really reliant on their volunteers. They could not do the work that they do without the volunteers they have in place. Last year, they had 55 volunteers who volunteered over 20,000 hours helping victims of crime in our community. Actually, 1,700 victims of crime. And you think about, these are the volunteers that, while we are nice and warm in our beds in the middle of the night, they're the volunteers that answer that page to go out and respond to the hospital, to sit with a victim of crime who is possibly going through the most traumatic thing that they've ever experienced, and our advocates are there, helping them all the way through that. Last year, they responded to 120 calls to our hospital to serve victims. Another program that we have that is really reliant on our volunteers is our Consumer Care Partnerships through our Health Department. They have a large base of volunteers who are out there working with volunteers as peer support, helping individuals who are referred to our Health Department through either a self-referral or a mental health referral, and our volunteers are helping, helping provide those basic things, helping them to set goals and be able to function in daily life. And last year, we had 13 volunteers. I know there are a lot more than that, but last year, we had 13 active volunteers helping with this program. They'll put in about 1,800 hours. And this photo up here, up on the right, this is actually a photo that was provided to me from our search and rescue team. This was, I thought it was very interesting. It was actually during one of their active searches. They don't have a lot of photos from active searches, and this was a mission that they were called out on where they were, this is a radio relay truck, so they're out in the mountains, up in the middle of nowhere, with their equipment so that the radio volunteers can talk to each other. We have volunteers out helping with our public safety. We are greatly appreciative of these volunteers. If we think back to last year and our extreme weather conditions that we had and some of the situations that we had to deal with, thankfully, we had these volunteers that were out there willing to step up while we, a lot of us really just wanted to stay inside and stay warm. We have our search and rescue volunteers. That includes our Jeep Patrol, our Mounted Posse, a couple of other teams. They had 84 active members last year. One significant thing that they participated in was an eight-day mission searching for a missing person up in the Detroit area. I believe this is one of the longest missions that this team has served on. And then we have our emergency management volunteers, our CERT teams. We have nine active CERT teams in our community, spread throughout the county. And these CERT teams, if anyone in the room has not heard of Cascadia Rising, I would be very surprised, because we do have these volunteers that are working in our emergency management program, who have really spent a lot of time and energy trying to get the information out and helping our community be prepared for these types of disasters. We have about 200 active CERT members in our emergency management team. Oh, and that photo up there, in the last photo, it was actually a 911 employee who, our search and rescue team, one of our Jeep Patrol, was actually providing transportation back and forth for our emergency personnel during one of our snowstorms, which was greatly appreciated, so that they could get to work. Our volunteers are out there participating in a lot of community events and community outreach. Up here on the left, this is an annual event that our Sheriff's Office volunteers participate in every year, helping to put together meals for Thanksgiving and providing them to families. Last year, they served around 1,000 residents out in the state and sublimity area. And down here on the right, this is actually, we have volunteers placed out in our institutions. These are the volunteers who go in and provide support groups for those that are incarcerated in our jails. And the work that they're doing is sometimes forgotten because it's behind closed doors, but it's extremely important for the inmates. And this year, the group actually put together a holiday party for kids and families to support them during the holidays, who had a parent who was incarcerated. So, this is a photo of their holiday party, where they provided gifts to some of the kids. And from what I understand, it was so successful that they're planning a barbecue this summer for the kids and families as well. We have our volunteers out there working in the community. We have, up here on the left, this is a photo of quite a few new interns that came in. Our Health Department offers a lot of intern opportunities for these students in our schools. They're out there providing public health information and education, helping with health fairs, helping with a lot of different activities. Last year, we had 15 interns placed in our Health Department. We have interns also in our Juvenile Department and Parole and Probation. And we can't forget our small and mighty departments that might have just one or two volunteers, but these volunteers are extremely appreciated as well. Down here on the right, this is one of our volunteers for our Law Library. And it's very interesting, our Law Library, I have to admit, I have never been there before. I've never really had a reason to visit, and since they have had a couple of volunteers recently, I'm starting to learn more about what the Law Library actually provides. And I'm told that these volunteers are extremely helpful, making sure that the reference materials in the books are placed properly, so that when customers come in, they can find the materials that they need. And I'm also told, there's trivia questions. There's trivia questions that have been developed by some of the volunteers, and I'm very intrigued. So, I think that I'm going to have to make a trip over there to see what this trivia is all about as well. When our volunteers are out in the community, they are representing Marion County in everything that they do. It's one of the first things that we make sure our volunteers understand. And I can assure you that these volunteers out in the community are doing a fabulous job. Up here on the left is a photo of our cadets. And our cadets, they have it kind of tough, because they put on this uniform that is highly recognizable in the community. So, when they are out in the community volunteering, people recognize them right away as a county person. And I can say from personal experience, I have worked on events with these volunteers. They are extremely professional, extremely hardworking, and I would serve any day next to them. Our volunteers that are out at community events, oftentimes serving at health fairs and things like that, down here on our left, is one of our CERT volunteers who's giving some information about emergency preparedness and helping people to make sure that their family is prepared for a natural disaster. We have a lot of volunteers working behind the scenes on boards and committees as well. Last year, we had over 300 volunteers serving in boards and committees. They served over 3,000 hours helping the county make informed decisions. One of the things that we know the county really wants to do is make sure that our government is fair and transparent and open, so we really encourage that citizen participation. Most of the time, there are openings in our boards. We're recruiting people to fill open spots. Currently at this time, we have our Health Advisory Board and our Local Alcohol and Drug Planning Committee. They have some open seats that we're recruiting for right now, but these individuals serving on our boards are doing some really great things behind the scenes. And a lot of times, our volunteers, they just really want to have a good time. They're here to serve, they're here to help, but we also want to enjoy our time while we're together. And so, I think that, I think that we do that quite a bit. Our Marion County Fair is one classic example of an event that could not happen without our volunteer serving. And our volunteers have a really good time while they're there as well. We even recruited our famed treasurer to volunteer in the department to help judge, I think it was the photography contest or something like that. So, our fair is a great time for a lot of volunteers. And a side note, we are currently recruiting for volunteers for the fair as well. It's coming up in July. I hear there's going to be some great concerts, and our volunteers get in free as well, so just a little plug there. Our volunteers are out there making sure that our county is healthy and a good place to live. Sometimes we forget, we have our volunteers out there in our Adopt a Road program. They're out there cleaning up the roadsides, and it's something that we wouldn't notice unless they weren't there actually doing it, because they serve a lot of time making sure that those roads are clean. Last year, we had 667 volunteers serving in the Adopt a Road program. They put in over 2,000 hours, and it equaled out to be 300 miles of roadway that were cleaned. So, I pay a little more attention now when I'm driving down the road and I see those bright yellow vests with a volunteer on the back of them. I appreciate them. Our Environmental Services Program has a lot of great programs that are really run on volunteers, a lot of really passionate volunteers who are working to make sure that our community is, our resources are being used properly, and we're saving them. One of the great things, they're very creative with their programs. Last year, they actually had a blue jean swap at the library. They partnered with the City of Salem Library, and they had individuals bring in old jeans that they no longer needed or no longer fit them. And it was right before school started, and so the individuals that brought in jeans for recycling, then they were all invited back to pick out some new jeans. So, they were just recycling those jeans back to other families, which I thought was a great idea. We have our master recyclers, a lot of master recyclers in our community. Last year, we had 43 new master recyclers. And this picture on the lower right, that is the latest class in the fall of 2016 that graduated from the program. So, as you can see, our volunteers are out in our departments and out in our community every day, doing things that we may not even recognize or we may not see. They definitely deserve a lot of appreciation and thanks. This is a time to say thank you to our volunteers, and it's a time to recognize that the things that we do couldn't happen without our volunteers. So, this is Volunteer Week. Thank you to the Commissioners and the county for proclaiming this week as Volunteer Week in Marion County. We appreciate the opportunity to recognize our volunteers. We appreciate the Commissioners and the county for appreciating our volunteers and allowing them in our departments. We appreciate our departments for bringing in the volunteers and training them and managing them so well, and making sure that they are respected and appreciated, so they keep coming back and they want to keep continuing to volunteer with us. Throughout Volunteer Week, we are highlighting some of these stories on our social media page. We are increasing our following so that we can get the word out. So, we do have our Facebook page. We have our website that we advertise open recruitments as well, so anyone that's interested in finding out what those open recruitments are, we try to advertise those as much as possible. And the full annual report is available on the website as well, electronically, if anyone would like to read the full report. I provided you all with a copy of the report as well. If you have any questions that I can answer now, I'd be happy to do that.
Are there? Well, this is a question. I don't hear anybody jumping, but we may have more later, although I'd like to say, while I've got you here, that you're doing a great job of recruiting and organizing and supporting these volunteers, and I appreciate those efforts too.
Thank you, thank you.
So, let's get on with the presentations. I'm not quite sure how it works. We'll come down, have quite a bit to read about each person, and that's great. And then before you all, if you'd come and get an award, if it's appropriate, Julian Kelly's back there, I'm sure she's going to want to take a picture before we let you get away.
Yes.
So, if you're ready, am I missing anything? Let's go.
Ready.
Picture's going to go in the post office. Yeah, next to yours.
Yeah.
Are you still the most wanted, or have you moved down?
Least wanted.
Go ahead. Ready to begin?
Yes.
That's on. We decide what? There you go. Thank you. All right, to start out, we'd like to recognize Laura Mayfield, Law Library volunteer. I'm not sure if we just saw a picture of her. Ms. Mayfield is a volunteer Marion County Law Library. She's volunteered more hours than all other past volunteers combined, and was even willing to volunteer the Friday after Thanksgiving to help with inventory. Her tasks at the library include labeling books with barcode labels to help keep them in the library, catalog call numbers, sorting newspapers, resheling publications, and creating informational bookmarks for patrons when she's not too busy with these other tasks. Ms. Mayfield also helped put together creative trivia questions, huh, to amuse library patrons and other county offices. So, thank you, Laura Mayfield, for all you do for the Marion County Library. Is she here? Ah. Just come on up, Laura. You hand it to him, but I just want to shake hands. Laura, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Can you give us a trivia question?
I just understand you're standing. You need to stand with us.
Stand right here. Stand right here. Okay. I think we need to put you on the spot.
Everyone ready? One, two, three.
Kevin wouldn't know the answer anyway, so that's...
All right. No, I wouldn't know the answer. Commissioner Carlson.
Congratulations.
So, we're next recognizing the Sunday Dog Walkers from the Dog Shelter. Are you here, Sunday Dog Walkers? All right. Well, we'll recognize them anyway. There's a small group of very dedicated Sunday Dog Walkers who have helped the Dog Shelter tremendously this year. This group consists of four to six volunteers who show up every Sunday to make sure the dogs that are housed at the shelter get outside for a little exercise and attention. The Dog Shelter is closed to the public on Sundays, and with only one staff person on site to run the entire operation, the Sunday Dog Walkers Group is a tremendous help. If the dogs could talk, they would say the same. Their effort goes above and beyond the average level of commitment for Dog Shelter volunteers. Thank you, Sunday Dog Walkers, for your dedication to Marion County Dog Services.
So, next on the list is Casey Ratcliffe, a volunteer with Marion County Environmental Services. Casey completed the Master Recycle Program in 2015. I think that was a class I was in, in 2015, and volunteered over 100 hours last year, primarily working to maintain her department's earthwise status. Casey spent her career working with local and state government in the fields of conservation, sustainability, and natural resources. She promotes sustainability and resource conservation in implementing a variety of energy-efficient waste, water conservation, and climate education and grant programs. She does employee recycling, waste orientation, and presentations, kind of like you in our office, presentations. She set up a new compost program at work. We're going to work on that in our Board's Office here pretty quick. Sam, for all your leftover food, right? Oh, there isn't any leftovers when you eat. Okay. Worked on creating a sustainable plan for her agency, organized a zero-waste barbecue. I think that's mean, means you have to eat all the food that's there, right? And took the lead on ensuring that her department's recent move to a new building included a strong recycling and composting program, and ensured that the waste was minimized and much more. Beyond her volunteerism at work, Casey has also hosted a food waste prevention event, helped at the Oregon Green School Summit, I got to attend that last year, helped at the Clackit Creek Watershed Earth Day Event, and hosted a Scenic Byways presentation. Casey's extremely knowledgeable, experienced, and passionate about our environment and our community. We are grateful to have her involved in our Environmental Services Department. Casey, congratulations. Nice job, nice job. Before you go, can paper towels be thrown in the blue bin in our office?
If they're dry. If they're wet, you can...
See, we have these discussions all the time in our office.
Who is your hauler?
Uh...
How do people know?
Sam would know that question. Is this Republic probably here? It's probably Republic.
If you take the Master Recycle Class, I highly recommend it, you can find out who your hauler is, and they'll tell you more.
Right. Or you can go to the Marion County website and find out how to do those things. Thank you for all you're doing in our community. Appreciate it. See ya, torches.
What do I know? The next volunteer team to recognize is a mother-daughter team who helped out at the Marion County Fair, Charlene McCormick and Charlene Garcia. In 2016, the Marion County Fair Volunteer Program was thankful to have this mother-daughter team on their side. Mother Charlene McCormick and daughter Charlene Garcia were the first point contact for volunteers at the County Fair. They welcomed each volunteer with a generous smile, sense of humor, and pleasant demeanor. They answered questions, offered directions, reached out for assistance when needed, and went the extra mile to ensure that the needs of volunteers were met. They kept the volunteer hospitality area clean and tidy, restocked refreshments as needed. The volunteer duties fulfilled by Charlene McCormick and Charlene Garcia were key to the success of the volunteer program at the Marion County Fair. By volunteering all four days of the fair, they provided continuity of record-keeping and management of the volunteer check-in and hospitality area. Their commitment and willingness to troubleshoot also freed Marion County Fair volunteer coordinator to address volunteer needs throughout the fairgrounds. They were dependable and an absolute delight to work with. We look forward to having them volunteer with us at the 2017 Marion County Fair. So, thank you, Charlene and Charlene, for your dedication and time.
The next group of volunteers to recognize are members of the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. And I had to go back and get the list, because I wanted to read all the names of the people. Will and Bob are here. Do you want to come on up? So, we have Thomas Smith, Joe Fowler, Robert, Bob Anderson, Todd Irvine, Will, how do you say your last name, Will?
Posegate.
Posegate, looks just like it looks. Darby Rancliff, Judy Skinner, Bonnie Sullivan, and Brian Sund. And they just had a meeting last night, and they are a very dedicated group of volunteers. SWAMAC, did you decide you're changing the name last night too, by the way?
We're still working on it.
You're still working on it, so it may, stay tuned. It may get a different name. Is a diverse group of dedicated volunteers who are all interested in improving Marion County's solid waste system. Solid waste doesn't involve cute dogs or provide direct assistance to clients. It's about garbage, the stuff we throw away and forget about. It's not pretty, however, for this committed group of volunteers, it's a passion. The council supports and makes recommendations on the county's goals of prioritizing waste reduction, reuse and recycling, and recovering energy from the material that remains. This year, SWAMAC members were called upon to study and make recommendations on the county's first tip fee increase in 25 years, and whether to increase the amount of medical waste handled at the Energy From Waste Facility. The council spent numerous hours reviewing and discussing difficult budget issues, learning about the energy market and how it's changed over time, and complex environmental quality standards. The group weighed all of this information to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on each of these challenging issues. Council members were thoughtful in their consideration of the issues and took their responsibilities seriously. Many SWAMAC members are also master recyclers, own earthwise certified businesses, and volunteer their time to promote waste reduction, reuse, and recycling programs throughout the county. This year, SWAMAC volunteers were faced with numerous challenges and were required to analyze and understand complex information and issues. There are continuing issues the council will be discussing in the coming year. Many of the members have served for many years and deserve recognition for their contributions to the county's nationally recognized, integrated, solid waste system. Thank you to all the members of the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council for your dedication and commitment to Marion County. I want to say, Thomas Smith is the current chair, but how many times have you been chair, Bob?
I can't remember.
Many times.
Yes, a lot of times.
Can you just keep recycling?
Right. So, thank you for all you do.
So, we just confirm the paper towels go in the compost.
Paper towels do go in the compost.
They don't go in the recycling.
Okay, but we don't have a compost bin, but we're going to get there. So, Casey, you can help us get there. We've got... We've got a green team organized here in the, what do you call this? Courthouse Square Building to try to get our own building earthwise-certified. So, we're working on it. Thank you. Okay, so our next award goes to the Youth Volunteer Award, Anna Williams. Is Anna here today? Anna? So, come on up and stand next to me while I brag about you, okay? Right. The Youth Volunteer Award is developed to recognize volunteer accomplishments of young people 24 years and under in county programs and departments. All three of us could qualify maybe. The winner of the Youth Volunteer Award is Anna Williams. Anna started volunteering with Marion County Emergency Management Program back in 2015. After completing basic CERT training, she joined the Mount Angel Silverton CERT team. From there, she decided that she really wanted to spread the word about preparedness, so she became a certified CERT trainer. Anna is now responsible for hosting a teen CERT class through the Mount Angel School District and the Mount Angel Police Department. In 2016, Anna became a part of the Marion County Cadet Program. After graduating from the Cadet Academy, Anna became very involved with many events and activities of the Cadet Unit, giving 487.5 hours of time. That's a lot of time. Over all of her involvement with the events, the one thing that stands out when Anna saw the need for more formalized bike safety programs for kids and eagerly took the lead in putting together a proposal for bike safety programs. She researched the programs that other agencies had put together and put together a manual and training guide for the cadets that will be taking the lead on getting it started this summer. Your first student should be Commissioner. He rides bikes all the time.
Loves bikes.
Right, loves bikes. Anna is an individual who isn't afraid to jump in and volunteer for whatever might be needed. She's a very productive and a positive member of the Cadet Unit and the CERT team, and deserves to be recognized for her efforts. Thank you, Anna Williams, for your dedication and your volunteer efforts in Marion County.
Came to Mount Angel for my one-man State of the County presentation. Yeah, she said she wanted to see what the Commissioners did and left still not knowing, Our next award is the Advisory Board Award, Steven Bergman and Joshua Graves. I can hear that, so you'll have to...
This is Josh.
Okay. All right. The Advisory Board Volunteer of the Award is to recognize individuals who have made significant contributions to a Marion County Advisory Board. This year, we have a team of two volunteers, Steven Bergman and Joshua Graves. Steve and Josh are the two most senior members of the Compensation Board for Marion County. By statute, Marion County must have a voluntary board comprised of citizens of Marion County or who work in Marion County to review and recommend the annual compensation for our elected officials. The Compensation Board meets annually to hear from the public, elected officials, the budget officer, and review human resource data gathered in partnership with our comparable counties to make recommendations. Steve Bergman started on the committee in 2016 as the Chief Audit Executive of the State of Oregon with an accounting background and plenty of past history serving on board. Steve was immediately willing, with the support of his other members, to take the role of Board Chair. Now, Josh Graves has been serving on the committee for three years. He served as the Chair of the Committee this year in 2017. He has an MBA and oversees operations as Deputy Executive Director for a local nonprofit. Steve and Josh both bring a wealth of knowledge, individual perspective, and a strong sense of stewardship, as well as an understanding of the complexity and dedication to public service that our elected officials provide. They value the service provided and encourage a rich, healthy discussion at the meetings to ensure that consistent, fair recommendations are made, and these two board members deserve to receive the award for Advisory Board Member Volunteer of the Year. Josh, again, thank you. Quite done yet.
The Program Award is intended for those volunteers who display dedication and exemplary accomplishments within the division or program in which they volunteer. Volunteers in this category are recognized for their contribution to the customers or clientele the program serves and the betterment of the community. This year's recipient of the Program Award is the Marion County Cadet Unit. So, is someone here from the Cadet Unit? Get you to line up here, and then I will read what this entails, why you deserve this wonderful award. The Sheriff's Cadet Unit, Sheriff's Office Cadet Unit consists of 24 cadets between the ages of 14 and a half and 20 years of age. The cadets are overseen by one sergeant, one volunteer coordinator, and four advisors. During the 2016 year, the Cadet Unit volunteered 6,546 hours to our community at over 50 different events. Some examples of these events were serving meals at Thanksgiving to families in need, helping less fortunate families at Christmas with Shop With A Cop, Special Olympics, Oregon State Police Memorial Run, NAACP Peace Festival, and the National Drug Takeback, just to name a few. The impact of the Cadet Unit has to our community is huge. They lead our community's youth by displaying humility, optimism, and diligence in all they do. The Cadet Unit shows young people what it is like to dream of being a police officer and the steps it takes to get there. The Cadet Unit helps our department by volunteering hours with traffic control, manning booths at events, assisting with training, and providing security. What makes the Cadet Unit deserving of special recognition is the unselfish service of giving with no expectation of anything in return. These young volunteers balance school, sports, family, and work with the many hours they give to the Sheriff's Office. They are the future leaders and community builders of our future. Thank you, Marion County Cadets, for your contribution to Marion County.
It's time for the Mary Perry Mine Outstanding Volunteer Group Award, and it goes to the Marion County Consumer Care Partnership Group. We have some people here from that group if you want to come on forward. This award is in honor of the late Mary Perry Mine who served as the Commissioner for Marion County from 1991 to 1998. In addition to being the first woman commissioner, she was also a champion of volunteers and volunteer groups. This award is intended for those county-affiliated groups with partnership that consists of volunteers. The group receiving this award has also been added to the perpetual plaque. This year, the Marion County Consumer Care Partnership Group is the recipient of the Mary Perry Mine Outstanding Volunteer Group Award. Consumer Care Partnership has been providing support for individuals with mental health challenges since 2001. The CCP volunteers provide peer support in a team approach based on wraparound principles of identifying a person's strengths, needs, and a few goals of their choice on which to focus in their life. The Consumer Care Partnership volunteers have been providing this support for 15, 16 years and have made important impacts in the lives of people who have had the team The Consumer Care Partnership's facilitators must be able to communicate and identify strengths in others, use creativity to match resources for interest identified by the individual, and provide support for individuals working to accomplish a goal. The Consumer Care Partnership teams meet in the community to help individuals be less isolated and increase social connections. The meeting locations, as well as the activities they pursue, are decided by the individual receiving the support. Volunteer facilitators for the Consumer Care Partnership's program gave over 1,759 hours last year, which is the equivalent of 84% of a full-time staff person. As of June 30th, this program will no longer be provided by the Marion County Health Department. Our hope is that a similar program will be offered by a local organization in the near future. The cadre of the CCP volunteers, see the English teacher has to stand next to me. The cadre of CCP volunteers has been very dedicated over the years in providing peer support to the people who have been referred to the program by mental health agencies throughout Marion and Polk County region. These volunteers deserve the appreciation and recognition for their commitment to those in the county who have needed their help and support. Thank you to all the members of the Consumer Care Partnership Group.
I just wanted to take a minute. I've been a part of the program for four years as a facilitator. I was taught and trained to be humble and to be nonjudgmental, and I struggled with this a lot because of my own life. I needed a lot of support in my life, I still do. And Helen Laura took immeasurable amount of time to sit and talk when I needed support and needed instruction and direction in my life. And this program was there for me as much as I was there for it. And this is a program that's going to be dearly missed, and the facilitators have become a family, and so I'm hoping that there will be a program that will be similar to this one so that we can still continue to be supportive of each other and to continue using the tools that we've learned being part of CAPS, to continue to educate and support the community. This was a very important program, and it will be sadly, sadly missed. And Cindy Daniels, I want to thank you for also being there, and the rest of my co-team workers, I want to thank you so much for helping me, supporting me, and loving me when I'm unlovable. And I just want to say thank you for this time for letting me speak.
All right, our next award is the Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year Award. The late Rex Hartley served as a county judge and commissioner for Marion County from 1951 to 66. Judge Hartley was dedicated to involving citizens in the development of the county, and the volunteer receiving the Judge Rex Hartley will have their name added to the perpetual plaque. This year's Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year Award recipient is Janie Voland. Janie has been a sexual assault response advocate for a combined total of approximately eight years. She began her volunteer work in January 2008, worked until August 2013. She left to pursue a master's degree in counseling, completed that endeavor, then came back attending the 22-hour required training once more to become an active volunteer advocate again. Prior to receiving her master's degree in counseling, Janie's career had been as an LPN and head nurse at Corbin University. Her experience in training with victim assistant helped her serve not only victims of sexual assault in her community, but numerous students at Corbin. She was one of the special volunteers who seemed to always get a call-out every time she was on a 24-hour shift. Some people will get called out for months. Janie gets called out nearly every time. She has served upwards of 100 victims in sexual assault, providing comfort, support, and information during a forensic sexual assault exam. The average call lasts anywhere from two to eight hours, and more often than not begins past midnight. Janie has a full-time job teaching at Corbin and providing counseling services. She has a husband and several grandchildren that keep her busy, but she continues to give her time skills in her heart to the victims of sexual assault. We always say that the right person for the situation is always on call at the time, and that is always true with Janie. Her special skills seem to be just what is needed in each situation she encounters. She well deserves the Rex Hartley Volunteer of the Year Award, and it sounds like it. Or Commissioner Cameron, I know everybody wants it, I'm trying to say something. I should have let you do that, I want your close relationship with Corbin, and I should have let her speak too. It's pretty impressive coming back and doing all those things. When are you going to get your master's?
Soon? Yeah, I think you gave me my master's, or just being here, I've gotten my master's in education, or master's in whatever, yeah. This is nine and a half years in the legislature as a degree, and then being here for a couple years as a degree as well, so, thank you. Our last special recognition is for our, where are they? They're hidden back there, our CCTV volunteers. I'm sure that door's going to fly open here in just a second, and they're going to wave at us. They are working right now as we're talking. The county would also like to take a moment to thank all the volunteers from CCTV who filmed the Commissioners' Board sessions as they are doing right now. film the commissioners' board sessions, as they are doing right now, each week, and also produce the monthly Marion County segment. The CCTV board members—and Jolene can't get them to open the door, I think they're a little embarrassed back there. Yeah, maybe they fell asleep, yeah. There we go, yeah. Hi, Joe. The CCTV volunteers—session volunteers, Joe Fabry and Jill McCormick, thank you very much for your volunteer work. Come on out. These two volunteers are behind the scene every Wednesday morning, helping our CCTV staff producer, Shram—and I'm not going to say your last name, Shram—you're going to have to say it from back there because I can't pronounce it—ensure weekly board sessions are broadcast for real-time viewing by the community. Come on over here, Joe. I know you always hassle me every week, you know, and you don't have to be that far away. Yeah, so they check audio and camera equipment, create graphics, insert photos, videos, and all around make sure everything is running smoothly. Open and transparent meetings are a cornerstone of local government. Thank you, Joe and Jill, for making it easy for residents to keep up with what is happening in Marion County.
I also want to mention Ed Fryle and Richard Gallagher—they were a part of this as well, and they're just people that helped me be the type of volunteer that I am.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know Joe knows more about how to be a county commissioner than I do.
So now, we have the CCTV studio volunteers, and in 2015, we launched Marion County Today Video Edition on CCTV. After two years and 22 episodes, we're still going strong. This half-hour program gives us the opportunity to explore county programs and services in depth and introduce the community to our employees and volunteers. Topics have included emergency management, marijuana, solid waste, public safety, and I'm going to add some—I think Juvenile was there—we have child abuse and neglect, the Marion County Fair, so we've done a lot of different topics. We even had animals when we had the Marion County Fair. Last summer, we featured county volunteer opportunities. This show would not be possible with our studio volunteers, and before I name them and have them come up—it also says here, but I just want to comment on this a little bit—that they produced more than 100 episodes of How Are the Children with Commissioner Carlson and me. We started that in 2005 and went whole hog and then took a break for maybe a year and then came back and did all kinds of episodes on children, and we did these in the evening, and they came every single week—or every single month—we did two episodes a month —and provided all of that support. And so then when we decided that maybe after—I think it was 10 years—that we needed to do something a little bit different, they've moved over and done Marion County Today, and I'm so grateful that we were able to keep the volunteers that we had because they are just so dear to me and they have done such wonderful work. So let me name them now so that they can come forward and get their recognition. So Russell Ducey is in the front row, and I think Laurel—I think—I are you here, Laurel? There you are, I saw you in the back. I don't know that Will is here, have you seen Will Widows? And Will is kind of the head guy. And then Patrick Cassidy, are you here? Okay, but—so Laurel and Russell are here, and we have two others, so come on up. Thank you. Thank you, Russell.
All right, to Lisa and all the volunteers, all the people that came in this morning to help recognize them or to be recognized, we thank you all more than invaluable—if that's real language—the volunteers to Marion County. So let's take about a five-minute recess and reconvene at 10 o'clock, and get a chance to talk a little bit more before we get back to business. Our next item—as soon as he gets set—is the consent calendar.
I would think so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a move for the consent calendar. First item, Board Commissioners' OLCC application recommend approval for Southwest Fuel Management, Inc., EVA Salem 76, Salem, Oregon. Second item under the Board Commissioners' OLCC, approve an order appointing Gary Christopherson as interim information technology director effective April 28, 2017. Next item under business services, approve amendment number three to the lease agreement with Shanna Stellingworth, extending the lease through March 31, 2018, and adding $42,733 for a revised total of $421,165.85. Also under business services, approve amendment number six to the lease agreement with Tyson LLC, extending the lease through December 30, 2017, and adding $16,809.60 for a revised total of $242,867.20. Under health, approve a disbursement agreement with the Mid Valley Behavioral Care Network that will refund Marion County $392,996.58 for services not performed under various agreements.
I'll second the motion.
I have been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendars just presented. Any further discussion? Here none, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes, thank you. We have two action items this morning. The first is in the assessor's office, consider approval of the fiscal year 2017-18 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance or CAFSA grant. Tom Rolthing, Leslie Box. Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Leslie Box and I are here today to present the fiscal year 2017-18 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant, or CAFSA, for your consideration and approval. That's a mouthful. The 1989 legislature created this grant to mitigate the statewide deterioration of the property tax system caused by a variety of factors, including a lack of local funding. The CAFSA grant adds funding intended to help maintain a healthy property tax assessment system at the county level. The Oregon Department of Revenue uses the grant application to allocate to each county a share of the total statewide CAFSA funding based on the budgets of all counties. The application requests information about workload, staffing, and budgeted expenditures, including capital projects for the various components of the assessment and taxation program. This includes the assessor's office, tax office, Board of Property Tax Appeals at the clerk's office, assessment and taxation support by IT, and tax distribution through the county treasurer's office. Funds available for the statewide CAFSA are derived from a percentage of interest collected on delinquent property tax accounts and from a fee on most documents recorded in the county clerk's office. The county treasurer keeps the money intended for CAFSA in a fund referred to as the County Assessment and Taxation Fund, CATF. At the end of each fiscal quarter, the county treasurer transfers monies, including interest earned on the account from the CATF to the Department of Revenue CAFSA account with the state treasurer. The distribution of the proportional grant funds from the state to the county's general fund occurs around the 10th day of the month following the end of the fiscal quarter. Each year, the Department of Revenue looks at market conditions and forecasts the amount that will be deposited into the CAFSA account in the following fiscal year. By June 15 of each year, the department sends a letter to each county, giving an estimate of the amount that the county will receive. This amount is based on the county's percentage of—the, excuse me, county's percentage and the forecast. The total CAFSA funds to be distributed statewide in the fiscal year 2017-18 distribution are projected to be $18 million, a 3.4% increase from the expected fiscal year 2016-17 distribution of $17.4 million. The certified grant expenditures for fiscal year 2017-18 are $6,185,780. Actual grant revenue to Marion County is estimated at $1,020,737, or 16.5% interest of the expenditure amount. That's it in a nutshell. If there's any questions?
Are there any questions?
Let me just—give me just a minute here.
Well, if I could, Tom, I just kind of lost it, where we collect monies and give them back—I just didn't get the whole thing—give them back to the state treasurer, so what monies again?
Interest from property taxes, property tax payments, right? If there's interest due, that money goes into CAFSA, as well as some monies from recorded documents from the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
So about what percent does this pay of the assessor's budget?
Well, it's just over—a just over a million dollars, and our budget is—
Sixteen and a half percent.
Sixteen and a half percent.
Well, this is—yeah.
Sixteen and a half percent.
The revenue expenditures. Right, so this is a grant that we approve every year, right? And the dollars are supposed to help counties do that assessment and taxation function so you can collect all the taxes from all the jurisdictions. It used to be a higher percentage, right, of the budget?
It is covering less and less of our budget each year.
Right, and you've got a five-year history on there. There it is, sixteen and a half, I should have looked at page—I don't even know what page this is, second page, I guess. And it was 22% in 2013-14 of the budget, and this budget hasn't gone up, it's actually less than it was in 2013-14, I guess.
Right.
So, how is the discussion over at the legislature about this fund? Does it seem like it's fairly secure, or are they looking to sweep it, or what are the issues around that?
Well, there's a few issues at the legislature, actually. There's—
Really?
Recording fees. There was a bill to increase recording fees for another purpose—I believe it was low-income housing of some sort. And we haven't—there's not a bill to increase the funding for CAFSA through recording fees. There is a discussion amongst assessor's offices statewide that it is funding less and less, and in particular for the distressed counties, there's a real issue, and there is a bill that potentially might allow them to keep a part of the property tax distribution to cover their assessment and taxation function. I'm not sure that's a permanent, you know, a long-term fix, but maybe a temporary fix if they pass it to get those counties by.
And does the Department of Revenue, in exchange for giving out this money, still have requirements about certain staffing levels? Do they audit different counties and try to determine whether or not they're adequately staffed?
They do. I feel their funding has been reduced over the years too, and therefore their capabilities to actually—in terms of enforcement, supervision. The system has become more and more complex as well, and that makes it more difficult for them to supervise. I think our office is doing very well, I think we're in really good shape, much better than most counties and states, so.
Very good.
But funding is an issue statewide for assessment and taxation.
And then, this grant application and the way you've allocated these funds, this becomes a component, right, of your larger budget? When you come to the budget committee, this is a piece of the funding, but then we have county general fund that helps—
Right, our funding—this money goes to the general fund, and the general fund pays our budget through the board's office.
Okay. Yeah, I just recall, and it was probably more than 10 years ago, when Lincoln County was having some fiscal problems, and they made some changes in their assessor's office, which they felt it was still appropriate and they could manage it, and the Department of Revenue came in and said, "Well, we're not going to give you your CAFSA money unless you add this position back," and the county commissioners came unglued because it was like, so for—basically—I can't remember what percent of their budget, say 20% of our budget, you're telling us, you know, what we can and can't do. So it's been an interesting conversation for quite a long time.
It is a part—it is a requirement of the CAFSA funding to properly fund assessment and taxation, and the Department of Revenue are the ones that determine what is proper funding for assessment and taxation. It's kind of a double-edged sword, you know, a distressed county, if you take more money away from them—
Right, exactly.
You know, it just hurts the county that much more. So it's a little difficult to comprehend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, we'd move approval of fiscal year 2017-18 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance, or CAFSA, grant as presented.
I'll second the motion.
I have been seconded to approve the fiscal year 2017-18 CAFSA grant. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'm not going to make fun of it, but this isn't the biggest item that's ever come before the board. Treasurer's office would like to consider approval of a resolution establishing a change fund in the amount of $100 for the Community Service Department Administration Program to accept customer payments for dog license fee. Lori Steele and—
Good morning, thank you, Chair Brentano, commissioners. I know it is not the most exciting item you've had or the largest item you've had.
I didn't say exciting, I said largest.
It is kind of exciting, though, and that's why I requested that we come and talk about this today, rather than just put this on your consent calendar. So I'm Lori Steele, the county treasurer. I have with me up here today Daniel Adato from Community Services, he works at the administration office, and Dean Fries, who is our—your title is—
Dog Services Manager.
Dog Services Manager, all right. And we are here because Community Services, the administrative offices in this building, has not had a change fund in the past, and they've not really been able to help customers that want to buy a dog license. And Daniel contacted me a couple weeks ago, and it seems like that they've had some requests, and so we're hoping to create a new place where customers can come, maybe that are nearer to this area, to purchase their dog license. So I'll let Daniel talk about their experience.
Morning. We just want to be able to provide dog license sales at our office. Right now, we just can collect checks and direct cash. This—having a cash drawer would allow us to make change, and we're hoping that once we start advertising the fact that we can collect sales for dog licenses, that more county staff will come to our office, and also maybe folks that live in the downtown area or South Salem. Right now, the only places where you can buy a dog license is you have to drive out to the shelter or at public work, so this will give the customers another opportunity to buy dog licenses.
Questions or comments?
No, it sounds like it's much more convenient for the public if they can get dog licenses as many places as possible.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we consider—or that we approve a resolution establishing a change fund in the amount of $100 for Community Services Department Administration Program to accept customer payments at the dog license fees.
And I will second the motion.
I have been seconded to approve the motion establishing a change—what's the correct word? Change fund. Any further discussion? And none, all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to present it, too. Well, that's the last item on our agenda this morning, other than to read the places we'll be together in the coming week. Start with today's— Start with, today is the 26th of April, it's Wednesday, 11:30, is Economic Development Meter Coordinator Meet and Greet in the Commissioner's Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And then at noon, also at noon, I should say, from noon to 1:30, Administrative Professionals' Day Luncheon at the Madison Delaney Grill, 5745 Inland Shores Way North in Kaiser. Just to be clear, both commissioners, you're invited, and Lori, if you'd like to come.
Our staff are going, we're taking our staff to Costco for a big dog for lunch.
A hot dog?
Can we just go with you? No, thank you. Well, you had to, I invited you, that's all I wanted to say. And then this afternoon, Retirement, at 3:00 to 4:00, Tom Fries, our IT Director, that'll be here in the Senator Hearing Room on the 1st floor, 555 Court Street Northeast. Tonight, fun one, I think, 4:26, Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00, Sandy M. Awards Night at the Sandy M. High School Auditorium, 265 Southwest Evergreen Street in Mill City. Tomorrow, early, 7:30 to 8:30, the City Schools and County Quarterly Breakfast at Silverton, Mont Angel, Gerber, Scottsville's, and that'll be at the Oregon Garden Restaurant, 895 West Main Street in Silverton. Is that addressed right? It doesn't sound like it would be. But, then Monday, Calendar Review, Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. Also Monday, that's following it is management updates, over in Conference Room, same location. And then at 1:30 on the 1st, a one-on-one with elected official or sheriff, Jason Myers, again, Silverton Conference Room. That's followed at 3:00 to 4:00 with a one-on-one Department Head Business Services Director, Colleen Coons Chafin, again, Silverton Conference Room. On the 2nd Tuesday, 9:00 to 11:00, a work session having to do with roads and bridges, Silverton Conference Room, 5455 Court Street. Tuesday the 2nd, 1:30 to 2:30, a work session on Veteran Services, Silverton Conference Room, and that's followed at 3:00 to 4:00 with CCTV taping in the CCTV offices, Studio 2, 575 Trace Street Southeast in Salem. Next Wednesday is our next regular board session at 9:00, here in the Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem. And that's followed at noon to 1:00 with the monthly Woodburn Marion County Meeting at Luisa's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn. Bit of a busy week. Anything to add?
Well, let's see, we had a great swamp meeting last night, I think I mentioned that briefly when we were down there, they had some folks from Washington County and Republic talking about some programs that they're doing with collecting commercial food waste. So I know that's your favorite topic, but I just want to let you know.
Well, when they start talking to digesters, is that what they talk?
Nope. They have run a pilot in Washington County, it's been highly successful.
Yeah, it's compost, not digesters.
Well, just before, so what are the candidates for the new name?
Yeah, I was going to joke about that.
I happened to leave before they got there, so, I think, what is it? Waste? It's not waste, even, something resources. I can't remember what it is.
All right, well, maybe.
There's nothing about solid waste in the topic, so, because they're not about just solid waste anymore, they're about so much more.
It's an evolution thing.
It is.
Environmental Services Advisory.
Hey, you know what, I got my pack.
Why don't you just call it Environmental Services Advisory Committee?
Just a minute, it's on.
I'm happy, whatever they want to be called, because they could have given us...
I was thinking it was Sam's Garbage.
Yeah, just when it was in the minutes.
That's what I was thinking.
From last time, changing.
What's the date?
Marion County Resource Management, there you go.
Resource, that's too broad.
Resource Management.
It's got to have something about...
Yeah, the idea is to shift away from the term of solid waste, just from everything that is happening with DEQ, and how proactive Marion County has been. So that was what was in the minutes from last time.
All right.
But I, they still hadn't decided on it as of last night, so.
I can't read lips.
Is that correct address?
Oh, it is, all right, Main Street, I wouldn't have thought, fine. It is the correct, I'm getting word, correct address for the Oregon Garden. Anything else? Well, a round of things to talk about.
Um.
Okay.
I was just looking, this is really important, it looks like it might be sunny on Friday and Saturday.
Really?
Yeah, and then next Wednesday, maybe a full sunny day. So on the way to work out this morning, I played Creedence Clearwater, Who'll Stop the Rain? And I'm looking at this, maybe it's going, we've played enough, maybe it'll happen.
I have a wedding Saturday, and my, my wife...
It's going to be a nice day.
Yes, she's from the Farmer's Almanac, and it declared that on that, on Saturday, the weather would change, and I've been giving a grief all along, and it looks like she and it might be right.
Yeah, forecast Salem, actually...
It said close to Saturday.
Yeah, it's a little rain Thursday, and then it looks like Friday partly cloudy and sunny, and Saturday all sun.
Nice.
You are just going to have a great day for your wedding.
All right, I think we're going to just call this, last chance, let's call this meeting adjourned.